This conference will now be recorded.
Are these supposed to be on now? One, two, one, two, can you hear me? One, two, one, two. One, two, one, two, three, four. One, two, five, nine. Six, eight, two, five. One, two, okay.
Test. Yeah, that one's loud enough. Hey, how are you?
Doing well.
Good, good, thank you.
Do you know if this guest wireless network is accurate here? Or?
It's, it's working now. Okay, is yours what working?
Well, I don't know, I hadn't tried, I, I just, I know it hadn't in the past very well.
Yeah, it, it, it's, mine didn't start out working, now, now it is working.
I shall try.
Hey Angie, can you hear me on here? Perfect, okay, I can hear you all.
Okay, so the chair resigned. There was some confusion, we thought I was the chair, but I wasn't here for voting, I don't think I was the chair. So, it'll be exciting to see what happens here with the... Hopefully we have some alternates on the way or something.
I think we voted you in as vice, as vice chair.
Oh, did you?
Yeah, I think it was vice chair again.
Okay, well, Shirin told me I wouldn't be, he gets the last laugh. Awesome. All right, well, we won't waste any time, it's 5:30, we ready to call the meeting to order? Excellent. Okay, we'll start with a, we'll wait for Tracy and we'll do the pledge of allegiance, does that sound good? There we go. Okay, let's stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can we get a roll call for attendance, please?
Here.
Present.
Here.
Okay, next on the agenda is the approval of the planning commission meeting minutes from March 12th.
I have a correction.
Okay.
On the present, it shows Justin Keeler, present, he was not here. The rest of us were here. That being noted, I'll move, we accept minutes as adjusted.
Okay, second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay.
And thanks for printing this out, by the way.
Absolutely.
Yep.
It's a, that's, we, we don't usually, we don't usually get this, so this is nice.
Quick clarification, if Justin Keeler is on, he's not even on the planning commission now, correct?
No.
Okay, just one.
He wasn't absent, he was...
Yeah.
He was just...
Just copied.
Oh, hey.
Yeah.
You know, those are easy things.
Not a problem.
This is not tonight's agenda, this is the meeting minutes.
Okay.
Oh, no, we got, I don't think so.
I've got it here electronically. For a moment, I thought that's, I thought that's what we had on paper, I, I like that. Okay. So, we need to amend that because I cited that as the planning commission meeting from March 12th minutes, and we're actually approving the minutes from April 23rd tonight. My mistake. Reading the wrong agenda. Need a special process for that, or? Excellent. All right, next on the agenda is public comment. Nobody attending in person today, do we have anybody online?
Okay.
Okay. Do we typically leave this, well, open the public comment? 5:34. And then do we need to leave it open for a minute to see if somebody shows up? No, okay, we'll close the public comment. Next on the agenda, public hearings, I don't believe there are any scheduled for tonight. Takes us to unfinished business. 1.7 dot 1. I guess we'll turn that over to staff, thanks.
Good evening, planning commission, and good to see you again, it's been a couple months since we last spoke with you. We're going to be talking with you again about the city's comprehensive plan update. And Alec is sharing this presentation with me, so I'm going to do sort of roughly the first half of it, talking about land use scenarios, and then he's going to do the latter half, talking about the updates that we've made to the city's land use and housing elements, the comprehensive plan and corresponding code updates. So, I'm going to try and, we're going to try and be efficient with the presentation here. And so, if possible, it would be great if you could hold your comments until the end, just because I think that that will sort of be more conducive to being efficient with, with our time. But if you have a burning question, go ahead and ask, I guess, but otherwise, we're going to try and get through the presentation first. So, go ahead to the next slide, please. The purpose of tonight's presentation is to talk to you about a couple of things. One, the adopted county population, housing and employment allocations. And so, last time we spoke with you, the county was still kind of churning through that process, and then here in May, they finally adopted allocations, you may have read about that in the newspaper, or maybe you didn't, but anyways, we're going to bring you up to date on that. We're going to talk to you about some proposed land use scenarios to accommodate those allocations. So basically, where in the center or adjacent to the center could that new population and employment go? And then, as I said, Alec's going to be talking with you about the updates that we've made to the land use and housing elements of the comprehensive plan and the code. So, just as a quick refresher, since the last meeting that we had with you in March, we had received comments on that first draft of the land use and housing elements, we, and, and the code, and we updated the draft to reflect those comments. I think all of those comments were received from former commissioner Nutbrock. And so, once we updated that, we posted it, and I believe that the city sent that out to the planning commission for comment. We didn't get any comments on that second draft, so that's kind of where we're at, at this point. And then, as I mentioned, since the last meeting, the county adopted new allocations. So, let's go ahead and dive into those allocations. So, those officially adopted allocations are what you see there on your screen in front of you. So, for population, the county has said that La Center has, and, and its urban growth area has the capacity for 5,713 people, and will be allocated 3,884 over the next 20 years until 2045. And that leaves a surplus capacity of 1,829. On the housing side of it, oops, sorry. That's okay. On the housing side of it, the county says that the city and the UGA have the capacity for 2,122, and has allocated basically equal to that, 2,123, so there's a deficit of one housing unit. I mean, that's, basically, you can just say that, that capacity and allocation are equal in that case. And then for employment, a capacity of 2,096, but an allocation of 2,142. So there's a deficit of capacity of, for 46 jobs. So, that is area, land area that the city needs to find to accommodate those jobs, either within its existing urban growth area boundary or through an expansion. Next slide. And you may or may not remember this, but one of the obligations of the city under the Growth Management Act is not only to plan for those total numbers of population, housing and employment that we just showed you, but we have also talked to you in the past about how the city is obligated to accommodate housing in different income bands. And that's different than all the other comprehensive plan updates in the past that the city has undertaken, because previously, the state and the county did not require the city to accommodate housing in certain income bands, only a total number of housing units and a total number of, of jobs. So, back in March of this year, if you look at sort of the, the first row of that table, we had been talking to you about these numbers and how they sort of broke out across these different income groups. So, the totals have not changed since March, for, until the officially adopted numbers in, in May. So you, in each case, there's a total of 2,123 housing units, but how they allocate across those income categories has changed. And so, the reason that that changed is because the county was working with the cities, all of the cities in the county, and some of the cities wanted what was called Method A at the time for allocating housing units, and some of the cities wanted Method B, La Center wanted Method B. Camus wanted Method A, for example. And so, what the county decided to do was pick a halfway point between Method A and Method B. And what that ended up meaning is, is that La Center got a larger allocation of lower income housing units. So basically, from 80% of the area median income, where, where it says, in, in that column, it says 704 housing units and 404 housing units. So 80% and below, actually, sorry, 50% and below, it got a larger allocation than it had back in March. So if, in March, as an example, there were 272 housing units needed in the 30 to 50% category, now there's 311 needed, can you see that?
Right.
In the table, okay. So...
Income went down.
What's that?
And the 50 to 80 went down.
50 to 80 went down, and the, some of the other categories above that also went down. So, the, the basic takeaway here is that more units needed in lower income categories, less units needed in higher income categories, that's kind of take away from this, from this slide. Okay, next slide, please. So this is simply the adopt, city adopted zoning map. And the reason that this is in here is to show you where, if you look in pinks, in the pinks around downtown, the oranges kind of out there by Riverside in the northwest quadrant of town, and then kind of that maroonish red over there in Timman Landing, that's the mixed use area. Those are the areas that can accommodate medium and high density housing, and then also out at the junction.
And this is the current map?
Current map, current map.
And then the purple slashy dark blue area at the junction?
That is, that's just part of the junction, and I believe that that purple slash is an urban holding area, which basically just means developers have to kind of prove up utilities in that area. So, i- is that the purple slash area you're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's the Alana property.
Right.
Is, yeah. Can you clarify, I'm sorry, is the Alana property itself, is that pretty much the green there?
No, purple.
Just that purple section?
Yeah, Alana is.
Well, well, no, what that, what was transferred over to tribal lands.
Right, it's pretty much where the purple...
Just that purple section?
Is, it's the old fudge and 3B properties, but it's pretty much that purple.
Which would answer which is under ownership by, but what was recently approved to be able to be taken into trust if owned, does include down into the green, but perhaps not all of it, is that correct?
That's my understanding of it, Tracy may have.
Is that the question, is that the question that you're asking?
That is my question.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's kind of the potential future, but that's not...
Okay, so it just made provision to be able to do it, but it wasn't actually transferred over to tribal trust?
That's my understanding, that, is that...
So, we did just receive documentation that there was a lot that was transferred into the trust for the tribe, and I don't know what that lot number is, but I just got the documentation on it this week. So, this, actually this past week. So, I can provide that information to you guys for the next meeting or in the email.
Okay, that would be great.
Yeah, no problem.
Paul, you're talking about the, they do own a small piece of property...
Right.
South of, of the Center Road in the green there.
Right.
That's not identified on there, but they do own, I don't know how big a property it is, but it's a couple of acres.
The old dairy one, right?
It's almost to, it's almost right near the, when you come off the freeway going north, it's just to your right there.
So I can tell you where the, I could tell you where the property is, I, I just don't have the parcel number. So when you come off, when you come off the exit or you're heading down into La Center, you know where that milk barn is?
Yeah.
That's that piece of property, that's the one that got transferred into the trust.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's...
That's the one I understood to be...
Yep, yep, so, and that did occur.
But there is some property also on the right hand, on the, on the south side.
They do own, they do own, they do own a piece of property on the right hand side, that's correct. Not the first lot, but the second lot, right next to it, and they own a five foot strip. So what is that, what's that road that goes there?
Paradise.
Paradise.
Paradise, so there's a five foot strip at that corner of Paradise that goes, that they own. And then the first lot is not owned by them, but then the second lot is, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so the reason I'm showing you this map primarily is just that, if you think about housing that can accommodate people of lower incomes, so 80% and below of the area median income, it's primarily those areas in pink, area at Timman Landing, area at the junction, and areas that are sort of that orange peach color, which is the MDR 16 zone, because that's where you can build townhouses, that's where you can build apartments, and that's the type of housing that would accommodate that population. Okay, next slide, please. So, with that in mind, WSP ran some numbers to figure out what, how much zoning, how, how much land needs to change zoning to accommodate those income categories. And so if you look at the far left column of this table, it shows you the area median income AMI category, all the way from zero up to 120% plus. And then it shows you there, sort of in the middle of the table, which type of zoning accommodates that medium density and higher, or low density and higher. So there's kind of a, a top half of the table shows you that, based upon the county's allocations, there's 1,050 housing units at 80% and below, whereas the city only has capacity for 757 of those units. So there's a capacity shortage of 293 units for medium density and higher density zoning. Whereas there's a capacity excess of 696 units in the low density zoning. Next slide, please. So we came up with some land use scenarios to capture what sort of zoning needs to change and potentially also urban growth area expansion. So, scenario A, as we're calling it, you would take 24 acres of medium density, sorry, 24 acres of low density and rezone it as medium density. And that would get you 293 units of MDR. You would lose 122 unit capacity for LDR, low density residential, but you would gain the 283. Scenario B, however, is a little bit different, it creates a new high density residential designation or zone out at the junction, and we'll show you this on a map here in a second. And so, in that case, you need fewer rezones within, within La Center, because you're going to put high density out at the junction, and that gets you a capacity for 296 medium or high density units. Okay, so let's go to the next slide and we'll show you...
And, and that's actually a new provision, because we did not have high density residential before.
And we still don't.
This is a new proposal, right?
It would be, right, it would new, it would be a new high density residential zone. Yeah. So, on the employment side, again, this kind of does the same thing, it takes the county's allocation for us, 2,142, looks at the capacity, it decreases the capacity by those tribal parcels that are going into trust that we just talked about, because those were partially designated for employment uses. And so then you only have a capacity of 1,759, that leaves a shortage now of 383, so a larger deficit of, of land that can accommodate jobs. And then, as you also have heard, the city's working on subarea plans, one for downtown and one for Timman. So all of this is kind of going on all at the same time. So within those subareas, which we'll talk to you about at some point in the not too distant future, there's some land use changes proposed there as well, including more land for employment. So that gets you back some of the employment that you lost. So you're left with a remaining deficit of about 106, we really should have just said 107 jobs there. Okay, so that's the employment side. So here is scenario A, and this might be somewhat difficult to see, but you can see that there's parcels hatched kind of in black. Those are the parcels that would change from low density residential to medium density residential. So there, you know, starting on the east, near the high school, and then kind of at the intersection of Highland and Lockwood Creek, there's some parcels there, which we thought might be candidates. Most of these, by the way, have willing property owners who have expressed an interest in having their properties rezoned, not all of them, but, but many of them. And then, there's a few in downtown, so that would sort of effectively extend the density of downtown just a little bit further east. There's a larger parcel there at the north of downtown called Klingenberg Parcel. And then out on Pacific Highway, the Weisner and the Juniper Ridge Properties, which the Weisner properties at least have expressed an interest in rezoning at one point.
It's the property owners that say, yes, we'd like it rezoned, I mean, or where does that initiate?
It's, yeah, it's a little bit of both, I mean, like in the case of Weisner, they approached us and said, you know, we're interested in possibly rezoning our property. But we also sort of looked at where we thought would be the best places to put this density in relation to proximity to schools, proximity to employment, proximity to parks. So basically, we're kind of looking at the public infrastructure available to accommodate increased population in those areas, and that was sort of a factor as well. Also, being close to major streets, right? Because the code says that if you're going to rezone to, to medium density residential, you're supposed to be near an arterial or collector street. So that was another factor in all of this. So then, what you can't quite see right now is if you look out at the junction on this graphic here, there's some other hatched parcels there that are, you know, that are hatched black. And those would be needed to accommodate that employment, employment land deficit. And those are parcels that have expressed an interest in coming into La Center's urban growth area, except for that westernmost parcel, and we need to still talk with them about this.
So it's on the west side of the freeway, but they're interested in being part of?
It's currently like county with a Ridgefield zip code, or is it Ridgefield City, or it's county then?
It's Ridgefield zip code, but it's definitely outside Ridgefields. So that, that would sort of accommodate the employment that, that you needed there. So that's scenario A. Let's take a look at scenario B. Scenario B is a little bit different, because there's more going on at the junction and less going on within the rest of La Center. So, whereas scenario A had quite a number of different parcels that were being changed from low density to medium density within La Center, you know, around downtown, over there by the high school, north of the Weisner parcels, there's only a few, there's only Klingenberg and Weisner that would be upzoned in this scenario. And then...
Represented in, in the pink?
Yes, pink, sorry.
Okay, we're now at hot pink, okay.
And then over there at the junction, what you would do instead is, north, north of the junction, you would create a high density residential zone, and by high density, we're assuming about 22 units to the acre. So, the existing medium density residential designation, which is essentially the city's highest density residential designation, goes up to 16 units to the acre. So this would go up beyond that a little bit. So just to give you sort of like a picture in your mind of what that is, Riverside, the apartments that were built at Riverside are right around that, that density. They were about 22...
22?
22, 23 units to the acre. So that's kind of the type of density we'd be talking about over there.
I, I thought we didn't have high density aspects, but so it's higher than what our allotment was, I mean...
Oh, 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 yeah, I see what you're saying. That's a long story. There was a development agreement out at, out at... There was a development agreement out at, out at Riverside that the developer used to sort of transfer densities around the site. And then southwest side of the junction there, you have those same parcels that would be needed for employment purposes. So those are your land use scenarios.
Still be used for businesses, though, on that west side? They're not, that southwest section.
Yeah, that's the intent, yeah. So everything around the junction then, because it's outside Le Center's urban growth area would require an urban growth area expansion. So the county would ultimately have to approve that urban growth area expansion order for Le Center to to do this.
Either through this discussion, has the county made any comments or any are they leaning towards maybe opening up the opportunity to expand our urban growth area?
Well, we've told them in very general terms that we'd like an urban growth area expansion and where it would be. And they haven't said anything. They, they, they basically invited us to to make a comment about, hey, where, where would this be? How would you accommodate this? And we've said, here's where it would be. We would do an urban growth area expansion at the junction. And they haven't said anything different than that. In fact, that, that discussion went into their their draft EIS document that they're working on for the whole county, the draft environmental impact statement. So, so far they're on board with that. That doesn't mean that won't change in the future, but it will require, I mean, there, there's no if and or buts about it. It will require a lot of discussion with them to get that done. But the thing that Le Center has going for it, again, are the subarea plans because the subarea plans increase, you know, assuming that they move forward in their, their, the current form, they would increase densities to some degree at Timmins and a little bit in downtown. And one of the requirements of the Growth Management Act is that before you look at urban growth area expansions, that you look at ways within your existing boundary to grow, look at increasing densities within your existing boundary. You can't immediately jump to an urban growth area expansion. So because those subareas are happening at the same time, that potentially makes our case for an urban growth area expansion stronger. So that's the end of my portion of the presentation. Yeah.
Yeah, back to that, the, the purple up there next to the junction, that's property north of the, the fudge property, correct?
Yep.
And any idea how many acres that represents? Any idea?
I should probably know this off the top of my head, but it's perhaps it may be more than that.
Eighty or so, maybe?
Yeah, together it might be nearing 60 or 80, something like that.
Which is right up against the bus barn.
Yeah.
I have a question. In scenario B, which is on display, help me one more time understand where that solves the employment deficit. I missed the employment part there.
Same, it, scenario A and B are the same with regard to employment. So if you look at the south.
The pink on the west side is still employment?
Yes.
Oh, okay, so only the north pink is resident. Okay.
Yeah.
Understood. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to hand it over to Alec and he's gonna take it home.
Maybe a quick question on A and B?
Go, go ahead, yeah.
Is there? So I guess, what's next? I mean, who, at, at what point do we give input on wanting A or B, or, or does a council do that, or, or councils probably want to decide?
That's it? No, that's a good question.
Modification, even alternative to.
We're wanting your input tonight. So basically, at the end of this presentation, we're wanting you to give us your input and the hope is that you would make a recommendation to the city council on which of these scenarios that you prefer.
I, I have one more thing for your question, Alex. One of the things that I'd like to see staff do, if we could, at least for me, would be good to see a chart that would see color coded showing the high, medium and low density properties currently in the city. Where, you know, just be able to visually see those on a, on our, on our map. So that you get somehow the three different colors or whatever, and just so we have a good visual idea where, where are those today in current housing?
Isn't that map A?
No, it's identified.
Well, so earlier in the presentation, there was a zoning map that we showed. So maybe.
It's got a lot more stuff on it. It's got a lot more stuff on it than that, though. I'm thinking something simple.
You want just the medium and?
Exactly, just, just those three things. And just so we have, I want to like visually see where in the city those currently exist. I'd like to see see that, kind of visually see that.
Would you like us to go up two slides and kind of see the orange and pink here to, are you wanting to see it tonight?
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay.
No, I'm good.
Alec? Can you?
Yes. Yeah, I couldn't hear you, sorry.
No, that's okay. Can you see the slide?
I can't see the slides, but I've been following along, so I can try our best to go through each slide. Are you on the land use element update slide?
Yes.
Okay. I guess I'll just show you next slide, just to make sure we're on the right slide as I'm discussing, since I can't see your slides there. So as Ethan discussed tonight, that I'll be taking on the land use element and housing element updates. And generally discussing those, what we've done. What, since the last planning commission meeting, since it was March, since the last time we've been here with you all, with the comprehensive plan update. And also be discussing the code updates associated with those. So first, here is the land use element updates, and most of this work has been done with that last draft we brought to you in March, but we've made some changes since then. So generally with the land use element, which is chapter one of the comprehensive plan, we updated to ensure consistency with other elements in the county plan. And that will as we go through this comp plan process, as we're working the other elements, we'll go back and ensure that the land use elements consistent with those elements and vice versa. There's a population and demographic section with the land use, within the land use element that we've updated with most recent census and state data. And then the most recent update we made was to the planning assumptions and targets. So that would be your capacity and allocation information regarding employment, housing and population that Ethan went over. So we went ahead, since we had the adopted county allocations and updated those accordingly. And then we updated the goals and policies in the land use element for to provide adequate employment in residential lands for the next 20 years per those allocations. Foster the, the center community identity and compatibility. Tie in the different zones in the city to various infrastructure needs. Considering climate change impacts as that resulted out of the new climate bill. And so we have to implement some requirements with the climate there. And then also continuing to plan for the junction as a mixed use area. Next slide, please. And so this slide is on the housing element, which is chapter three of the comprehensive plan. We updated the inventory and analysis of housing in the center. So just looking at the existing housing stock, what kind of housing types there are, how much has been built, so on and so forth. And then again, as Ethan showed earlier, there's the housing specifically allocated specifically for the different income segments. We updated that there and to be consistent with the land use element. And then we have updated the goals and policies within the housing element to address housing of different types and needs within the city to address affordability and the different income groups, as again Ethan discussed and showed earlier. Goals and policies around housing in proximity to employment centers within the center, housing preservation, and then identifying and undoing racially disparate impacts as mandated by the state. Then next slide, please. Sorry if you can hear the dogs, a dog sitting in there. Huskies that like to roughhouse a little bit, so I apologize if you hear that in the background. So the next slide is the first round of code updates that we had. And these, we showed these to you back in March. And the first is to chapter 3.35 of the code for impact fees. This included, includes updates regarding deferral. We now have expanded the deferral process for single family residential, and they can defer impact fees up to the point of occupancy. And then at the time of occupancy permits, then they'll have to pay their impact fees. And then we updated a definition to include different exemptions to conform to those RCWs listed there. We also updated the design standards listed throughout Title 18 of the code. So these design standards should include ascertainable guidelines by which an applicant can determine whether design is permissible under that development regulation. And essentially, that's saying design standards have to be objective and not subjective. And so for an example of that, in the design guidelines, there's a facade requirement requiring architectural features to be within a certain time period, and they list out craftsmen, Victorian and so forth, but there's no specific design elements listing to how to meet those different architectural design themes. And so that's left to subjective. Sorry if you can hear that. That's left to subjective interpretation. So therefore, we're eliminating that because that's not objective. Then lastly, short plots. There's different short plot requirements that we have to meet to to establish adequate public facilities and update subdivision approval expiration periods. One second, I'm going to change the headphones. It's getting pretty rowdy.
Can you, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear us, Alec?
Alec, can you hear us? Can you see the slide? I have it on 15. Do you want it on slide 15? LCMC updates?
Yes, let's go to slide 15, please. Sorry, the, they were, the dogs I'm taking care of were being really loud and I had to go check on them really quickly. Didn't want to interrupt the meeting, so I apologize. So here we have, again, permit supportive and transitional housing. These have to be allowed where residences and hotels are allowed in the city. And so essentially, these have to be, these are limited or conditional uses in the C1 zone, JP zone, MX and LDR 7.5 zones, since those zones allow residences and hotels. And then we added a new subchapter to the limited use code, 1827070 that defines supportive housing facilities, that applicability and some performance standards. And then lastly, here are emergency shelters and housing. These must be allowed in any zones in which hotels are allowed. And the only zone that hotels are allowed in the city are, is the junction plan zone. And then additionally, group homes here as part of this emergency shelters and housing provision says per state mandate that all areas zoned for residential or commercial purposes, including single family residential, group homes have to be permitted, permitted in these zones. Then next slide, please. So this is our first, and there's two slides, two or three slides here of code updates we've done since the last time we've talked to you guys in March. And first here is in chapter 18100, there's a matrix that shows the comp plan designations in a matrix with the corresponding zoning district and applicable code section. And so we updated this to be consistent with the matrix also in the land use element of the comprehensive plan. Because when we were cross referencing these, when we're doing this update, there's a lot of inconsistencies. And so we've updated that accordingly. And then since we are looking at implementing that high density residential zone, we placed a placeholder here within that matrix. And then we only had, as you've seen, the comprehensive plan designation column. We originally only had the urban residential comp plan designation, but now we have two residential comp plan designations. So that'd be residential, low, medium, and then residential high density. And again, just having that placeholder there for if we go forward with a high density residential zone. Then next slide, please. These are just more of those changes we made. It had the junction plan as a comp plan designation, but the junction plan is a zone. And then this is reflected in our map as well. The junction plan contains employment lands or industrial and commercial mixed use comp plan designation. So we updated that accordingly. And then next slide, please, Angie. This has to do with unit lot subdivisions within parent lots. So essentially, this is a new GMA requirement to include procedures for unit lot subdivisions. And the main purpose of these are to create affordable homeowner, ownership opportunities by allowing citing and dimensional flexibility for a single family attached subdivision. And these allow separate ownership of units in medium and high density residential zones and permitting these with reduced infrastructure costs through common ownership of facilities like parking, stormwater. And then you know, lot subdivisions allow some flexibility and development standards such as setbacks and building lot coverage. So in the center, these will only apply for single family attached subdivisions, short, short plat subdivisions specifically, and not for single family detached. And therefore, these are only allowed where single family attach are allowed. So this would be in the MDR 16 mixed use MX and the residential professional RP zones. And this, this is going to be all located in a new subchapter within the short plat regulations. So that's in 18205080. These will generally follow the same process and procedures for short plats. Just the difference with these, as you can see in that top row there, there's that graphic. It shows that minimum lot size of 7,000 square feet, which there's that graphic, it shows that minimum lot size of seven thousand square feet, which in this hypothetical scenario, that's the minimum lot size allowed in this zone. And a lot areas fifteen thousand square feet, so for a short subdivision hypothetically, you can split a standard short subdivision, you can split that into two lots and still comply with the minimum lot size. Well, with a unit lot subdivision and that far right area, um, there's some flexibility for set backs and lot area built into that. So the parent lot, so the whole green area has to comply with the minimum lot size for the underlying zones, that seven thousand square feet, but with a unit lot subdivision, um, there's flexibility where you can um maneuver around setbacks of and also maximum lot size requirements. And so provide some flexibility, provide different housing options here. And you know, lots of divisions have to uh basically have enough area to accommodate the dwelling unit accessory structures such as garages, driveways, um, yard areas and must have common areas, parking, accessing utilities, landscaping, and other requirements that we list down eighteen two oh five zero eighty. And then finally, these include some final plating requirements that overlap with the existing short plot requirements, but um there's additional standards that we list in the code, um, such as listing different plat notes. Um, stating that this is a you know, lot subdivision and that these you know, lots cannot be further subdivided than what is um provided on the plat. And then uh next slide, please Angie. Uh, these are our next steps um from today, um, so we taking this package forward from the planning commission to city council in July, so next month. And then um, we are starting to begin um updating the next uh package of the comp plan update, which is the capital facilities and utilities element, which is chapter four, the comprehensive plan. Um, we're gonna have that as a planning commission work group in August. And then um as part of the public engagement for the comprehensive plan and also actually the sub area planning effort, we're doing some summer tabling at a few events shown there um throughout the summer, so that includes the concerts in the park, R days, and the farmer's market. And then that concludes our presentation. Any questions?
Regarding this presentation, when will we see uh what we consider the completed presentation that will be taken forward to uh council? When we'll be able to see that?
Yep, I mean, this is it.
Well, no, it's, this has got all kinds of changes and so on. I'm talking about the clean copy.
Are you what the, you're talking about the clean copy code in the
Yeah.
comprehensive plan?
Yeah.
Um, I mean typically, we would make that available a couple of weeks before the council
Okay.
meeting. Yeah.
I want enough time for us to take a look at it before. That's fine.
Yeah.
Two weeks should be good.
But any recommendations that we want, anything we want to modify, we need to present tonight, right?
Right, understand, yeah.
Yeah.
Like to see the final.
The final.
Before, before the presentation on to council.
Well, there's a lot of uh new uh verbiage added in to the um the land use and housing or the comp plan, uh land use and housing part, and I guess that's be a result of the needs for the new concepts that we're incorporating. There's just a lot of new language in there. Um, which is not necessarily a bad thing. I didn't see anything that struck me as unacceptable. Did any of the rest of the commission have any comments on on uh anything that uh from the comp plan, land use and housing uh
I think it seemed to me that I could, when I could remember and visualize uh the changes that we had talked about suggested were incorporated.
Sure.
So I think uh I'm, I'm good.
Um, title eighteen, there was a lot of uh strikeouts, additions, the definitions especially. I may have been a bit confused about some of that, but I don't know that it's necessary to go through and explain each one and give the rationalization, but did any of the other commissioners have any questions about the additions or strikeouts, where it doesn't need to be just in the definitions, but anything at the title eighteen updates?
I, I distrust uh that the suggestions that we made were incorporated. I have no problem.
I, I think that those probably look fine. I, I think my question, I, I have just general kind of questions. I'm not sure if it impacts the, the plan so much. I mean, I, I know you're wanting some input on the, the scenarios of the maps and the, and where uh information comes from. I think my other questions kind of, um if I, if I'm understanding it, sounded like you're, so you, you've changed designations and terms. So the comprehensive plan that can only be changed once a year, you just have the three sets and then yet you, so both. And then you have zones within those that can be adjusted by adjusted zone adjustment by council, right? Am I understanding that?
Right, you can only update your comprehensive plan once per year, but you can go through a zone change any number of times.
Anytime. And, and so that's where we added, I mean, so made one comprehensive zone of the residential that included and clumped together both low and medium.
Yep.
And then added the high, correct?
Yes, yeah.
That's in the comprehensive.
Right now, there's only one residential comprehensive plan designation. It's called urban residential. Now, we're proposing to have two and, and one, just as you said, one would group low density residential and medium density residential into one designation. And then there would be a residential high density designation that would have a corresponding high density residential zone. Um, you know, so the assumption is that we're creating that high density residential zone um as part of this uh comprehensive plan update. Now, and as part of the land use scenarios, you might remember that that high density residential zone was look, gonna be located out there at the junction. So if the city didn't have the urban growth area expansion, um, that's shown in, in that scenario B, it would still have, because the code would change and the comp plan would change, it would still have a high density residential um zone and, and designation and comp plan designation. So that would mean that somebody could take that designation and potentially ask for some other piece, excuse me, some other piece of land within the city to be rezoned or, or, or undergo a comprehensive plan designation and rezone to high density at some point in the future, if it doesn't end up being out there at the junction. And that, that request could be applicable for which types of currently zoned, any, any type of currently zoned property could then, if we did not acquire the urban growth, uh, could, we'd have this placeholder that, that could potentially be filled by just about anywhere. Is that kind of what you're saying? Um, well, not exactly, because you would have to, somebody would have to first change the comprehensive plan designation to that residential high. Then they could change the zoning designation. So um, we would have to, if, if we were gonna create code language for a high density residential zone, which we're not doing as part of this update, we're just creating the designation and the zone.
Okay.
We don't have any zoning language or development standards to go with that right now. We could do that after the comprehensive plan update is complete. We would then, in that zoning language, talk about where it's appropriate to put that high density residential
Right.
land. Okay. Which would not be just anywhere, I guess is why. The answer to your question.
Oh, between plant maps A and B or plans A and B, I guess my preference would be B. Um, personally more just for the sake of the congestion of traffic and things like that, of having the higher density particularly off the, right by the high school area, that it's, it gets pretty congested as it is. And, and a lot already being developed, um, even with the median density, I think. To put some, some of the higher density things in there would be, um I, I don't feel like we have the infrastructure for that to support it. So my, my, my personal preference would be in that, in the zone B.
Could we put those A and B maps back up on the, on the television for a moment to kind of scan between them? Well, let me ask you, this is now the time where you would like feedback, Ethan, on the A and the B uh map?
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, let's stare at this one for a second, right? That's A. So the blackened areas the blackened area at the junction is for employment.
Yes.
Yeah. And the blackened, excuse me, I'll, could you just, rather than me trying to, thanks Ethan.
I, I mean, I think it's, you started off in the right way. So the blackened area at the junction is for employment. Every other black hatched area is a change from low density residential to medium density residential.
From low to medium and high density doesn't?
Not, does not exist in this
Yet.
scenario.
Right.
Right. So the trade off then between the two scenarios is in A, because you don't have a high density designation, you need more, more medium density parcels to get to that total number of housing units needed. Whereas B, since you have the high density, you need fewer medium density up zones within the city.
The medium density again is uh single family homes uh or uh attached or detached, the smaller, the smaller lot size, correct? Um, but that wouldn't include, uh, for lack of a better term, apartment buildings?
Well, it actually would because
In the medium.
In the medium.
Okay.
It would include anything from small lot, single family detached homes like you see in Riverside.
Right.
Um, on up to apartments.
Okay.
All of those housing types and, and then in between attached, single family townhouses.
Right.
Um, so, so all of those product types are allowed right now without any changes to the city zoning code or anything that we're proposing. All, all of those product types are allowed in the city's medium density residential zone.
Right.
The, the difference is that um it's hard to get to those higher densities, the apartments. In fact, without a development agreement, it, it's, you know, almost impossible to do that, and that's what Riverside did back in about twenty seventeen. They did a development agreement, they transferred densities around the site to get that apartment block. Otherwise, um, the maximum density of sixteen units to the acre, I mean, that's not an apartment. You can't really build an apartment at sixteen units to the acre unless you're talking about just like a little tiny apart, two story apartment building with four units or something like that.
And the, the twenty-two unit density was a conceptual for the high density zone that we discussed earlier.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
And the blackened areas, uh, not including the junction, those are all currently low density
Mm-hmm.
before this would change them into
Yep.
medium density.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other insights for this map before we move to the other? Maybe we could see the other for a moment, please.
So now we're looking at pink stuff.
So now we're looking at the same employment, the lower left hand corner in pink. A conceptual high density
Yeah.
north of the junction in pink. And then medium density in pink.
Yes.
Surrounding the downtown.
Right, zone changes in around downtown there from low density, medium density.
Those, those three pink parcels are low density and would change to or those areas there
Yes.
change to medium density.
So you still need some of those changes from low to medium, but not nearly as many.
And the areas that uh, the high school, for example?
Yeah.
Do we drag the cursor over the location of some of these notable?
The, the ones by the high school are now, it looks like they're low density closest to the
That would remain low density in this.
And then there's a section of median and then a section of RP.
And the
Right, to the south of the high school that you're talking about?
The south of the high school.
Yeah, that's the existing zoning.
Yeah, that's existing zoning.
Existing zoning, not proposed to change with
Yeah.
with scenario B.
But, uh, but that R and P could be a higher density even at that, correct?
It could be the equivalent of medium density. It could go up to about sixteen units to the acre.
And the slightly darker orange is still also medium density.
Yes.
Of the fields.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
My personal preference would be this one that's shown here. Um, would you, would you still say that your personal preferences is what we're seeing here on this particular slide?
Yeah, definitely would be.
I like, yeah, B is better. I like
Okay.
Is there gonna be any, we're gonna get any pushback on this?
I mean, possibly as people start to pay more attention, you know, toward the end of the process, you might.
Well, I think this has a much, could we see a slide A just one more time? I'm sorry to be a pest, but with that fresh in the eyes and then you look over here. Well, uh
Yeah, the high school is, uh, can you see it?
Cursor, white arrow is moving over the
Yeah, right there, a little bit, yeah, just. Yep. That's nice.
I, I like plan B or map B because it's showing plans for the future, plans for growth, rather than trying to reorganize everything of what we got and people are used to. There may be a little bit of that in areas that maybe seem appropriate for it in plan B. Plan A, uh, to me feels a little bit unnatural. But in regards to the areas surrounding the downtown at the junction, on either A or B, the employment area there, the west side, I like. I personally think that's a good move in the right direction. Like, who, who knows if that could potentially grow even larger in the, in the future, you know? Looks pretty good. Those are my thoughts, so I'll, I'll stop there.
I wouldn't be surprised if, that uh, that Bridgefield is not also looking at that growth in that area.
But not too far south of this, they are, but not those exact properties.
And is this the properties, the one closest to the freeway where you can see currently, if you drive by, where they've been scratching a lot of dirt around and kind of get the gravel, they've got kind of this nice, I don't even know how to describe it, excavator parked out on a big fresh path of gravel. Is that, would that be these?
I'm not sure, I'd have to go.
Oh, or that would be more the landscaping products, properties. Oh, okay. So what I'm thinking of is just a bit further south than that. Where they've been scratching around at the bare land. So these parcels then are the parcels immediately south of the waste treatment facility then?
Yes.
Or is there a parcel in between the waste treatment facility and where the black catches start?
It's
Just for curiosity.
Yeah.
I think there's two or three properties in there.
In between there.
Yes.
Oh.
Yeah.
How far, how far down does the tribal property go on that side of the freeway?
I think it stops just north of those black hatched
Okay.
parcels, if I remember right.
Well.
Yeah, on that, Jessica, that that one parcel that's in between, let's see, go to. What am I looking at? I'm looking at C, Map C. That one, go but go down. Where where there's going to be the more the high density apartments north of the junction. What's the blank area between the green and the pink?
That's a CPU electric station.
The substation.
Oh, the substation. Okay, gotcha.
That's why we didn't choose that one.
Yeah.
That's not going away for a while.
Going anywhere. But it is within city limits.
No, everything that's shown in pink at the junction right now, including the employment parcels to the south, the east of the, you know, the green. Junction zoning or comp plan designation and then to the north there, those green. Sorry, those pink. Hatch parcels are outside the city, outside the city's urban growth area. So all of that will require an urban growth area expansion.
So they have to have that even approved before you can designate it as such, right?
Yes.
But having this concept in place satisfies the needs to comply with the county's growth. Requirements, could I say, right? The numbers. So we're for for how long that buys us another year or the until when do the next set of numbers come out?
Oh, um, I mean, the county has, those were the allocations that it finalized in May. And so that's going into the county's environmental impact statement for the whole county that's looking at all of these numbers across the county. So.
Is that annual, I guess, is my question, or is that every? How often do they update those and then we go, okay, we need to, we have a deficit or we have a surplus?
That that this process that we're talking about right now only happens once every 10 years.
Yeah, okay.
They update population estimates from the state of Washington every year, but you don't have to go through this sort of planning exercise, but once every 10 years.
Right, okay. The comp plan exercise, right? Yeah, understood. So this, having this in the comp plan would satisfy the current needs, even if it remained conceptual for quite some time until the next comp plan update, right?
If it were approved.
If it were approved.
If it gets approved. So that's the important thing to note about those urban growth area expansions at the junction. The county has the final and ultimate say. On that, La Center can propose that to the county. The county has to. Discuss it, think about the impacts of expanding the center's urban growth area and and then approve it hopefully.
So if we recommend this, the city council also agrees with this. Then we would move forward with getting that approved before we finalize the comp plan updates for 2025. That like we would, it would be pending whether or not we could go, we would know before we've submitted the new comp plan then.
Well, the county's updating its own comp plan on the same schedule as La Center, which is now due December 31st, 2025. By state, by state requirement.
Okay.
So it'll kind of be an ongoing conversation. You take a step, we'll take a step type of a thing. But we'll start talking about this with them in concept pretty much right away to say, here's, you know, here's more exactly what we're thinking.
Okay.
And get the conversation going a little bit further.
So if the, yes, go ahead, please.
We want to, if they're, if this is going to face resistance from the county, we want to know. Because we're going to have to bring the county staff on board first, right? And then if they agree to it, then that will then get discussed with the county planning commission and then discussed with the county council. So. County Council has the final say and I don't know if they'll act before La Center adopts its comprehensive plan. I I mean, they will probably either act at the same time or a little bit before La Center adopts its comprehensive plan. But it'll it'll mostly be at the same time. But we should have some indicator of support before then, if that makes sense.
It does make sense. I guess this one more, what I'm trying to get down to here is if we plan for this map B concept. It doesn't get approved, then we kind of revert to that map A minus the employment. And then do we have a Plan C for where the employment would go? If, for example, A and B both didn't work just in that one particular regard because of the inability to obtain the growth boundary expansion.
We don't really have a Plan C at this point, so we'd have to scramble a little bit. But if there were no urban growth area expansion. permitted, then La Center would only be able to grow within its boundary and, you know, that that kind of goes without stating. So then we'd start start having to look at. What we're a little bit more of the specifics around what we're doing in the sub areas, you know, like in downtown and and Timon landing to see if we can fulfill. The employment.
Looking at this building and just everything, yeah.
Yeah.
Right?
Right.
Imagine that.
But La Center, I mean, a bigger point maybe to make in all of this is that La Center is getting. To the sort of. It's it's being hemmed in, if you will, because if you look at the county's growth plans that about La Center's growth plans, there's not very much. Future place for La Center to grow, not only in this next 20 years, but like beyond that 20 years. The county has designated very few what they call urban reserves adjacent to La Center. So the county is going to have to start thinking more than just the next 20 years, but more like 40 or 50 years, because right now. Without an urban growth area expansion, La Center has nowhere to go.
And what happens at that point? You just live under a deficit and you're penalized or this as a city? I mean, at some point you can't continue to grow with all these growths that never.
You still have to meet the deficit, but there's there would start building pressure for some kind of a longer term plan for. For La Center and, you know, this would include Ridgefield as well, and maybe some other cities in the county would have to start, you know. Looking in in the county would have to start trying to figure out where these cities are going to grow because right now they're hemmed in by agricultural land.
Interesting. Well, there's certainly a lot of that.
Yeah. And you want preserve, that needs to be preserved too. We need that agricultural land as well. Kind of going a little bit back to just kind of the aspects of that. Housing needs assessment and the quotas and things like that. As you as you look at those in the areas. I I guess I just look at the growth that's happening in that in the development. I know just looking at from my house, I can see about 175 homes that are going to be built. That are probably in that 80 to 100% range, price range or categories, which is almost like the full allotment for the 20 years. I mean, and and I know there's a lot of growth on the on the other side of town as well. House, I mean, it seems like we're having, will be having a lot more houses that are actually built. At a higher economic bracket level, it seems like than what they're saying we need to accomplish. I mean, or or and particularly since this is looking for 20 years down the road, right? Or these numbers are, I I guess I'm trying, I'm having a hard time figuring out where are they all? Does it then just stop and say, okay, you can't do any more building out of?
They're they're building right now based on the old comprehensive plan. This is all new comprehensive plan information. So it's what we have to do in the future versus what we had to do in the past. So they're all building based on the past comprehensive plan versus the future of what we're requiring.
So so all of these subdivisions that are being built now?
They're all on the old.
They're not even included in.
In this.
In these numbers of what's projected.
That's right.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so it's under the old, so they're they're getting the levels of of what was.
What the old requirements were.
What the old requirements were. Okay.
Yeah, that's a good answer.
Helps me. I mean, I I was going crazy thinking, where in the world are are these all gone?
Okay.
We're we're doing a sewer plant update right now. And as of right now, we're only at 50% capacity sewer plant. We're able to even bring in sewer from ALNA because we have the additional capacity.
So I think we've given our recommendation for starting with the map B as a recommendation.
I think you need to all vote on it.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I so moved that we had recommend plant map B as the way to proceed.
I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Yeah, and if we could get one more motion, which is a recommendation. On the land use and housing element. Changes and the code that goes along with that, just so we can take that forward as part of this package. I don't know that we, what's that? I don't know that that is that we have that motion written down, if that's what you were asking about, but. We'd like to take this whole package to the council, the land use scenarios that you just voted on, but also the land use and housing elements, draft elements. And the code that goes along with.
And that would be the chapter 3.35, the title 18.
Yep.
All those updated things.
Yes.
So do we have a wording for that motion that would work best?
Yeah, this, so maybe I can propose something, even though I'm not a planning commissioner, but we can go up a slide. Or to, sorry, actually down a slider to Angie, Alec had these listed out in terms of the code sections that we're changing. Or actually, actually above that. One more. Alec, do we, I I think what we should say is that. You know, a planning commissioner can make this motion, which is basically, I make a motion that we approve the draft. Land use and housing elements and the changes to titles three and 18. As part of the periodic review and forward those to the city council. So I can repeat that if you want.
Yeah.
I make a motion that we recommend the draft land use and housing elements. And the changes to titles three and 18 of the municipal code. To the city council.
Okay, before we have a motion on that. For me, everything that we saw with the title or the chapter three and the 18 seemed to all be coming from a necessity from all these concepts. Or was anything really?
Right.
Out there really too too scary? Is there anything that we're missing that was a major change that we should be aware of or consider that we just haven't? Talked about tonight that you might be wondering why we're not talking about it that that wasn't captured there because I'm not seeing anything.
I mean, not that we haven't talked about before. We talked in March quite a bit about housing code, specifically about permanent and supportive. Housing. So that would be one area of big change. Then tonight we talked to you about unit lots subdivisions. Alec talked to you about that, which is a concept of more flexibility on setbacks and lot sizes and infrastructure to allow. Housing units to fit on small lots. Those are potentially kind of the biggest changes in.
Thank you.
All of this.
Specifically out at the junction, there was a lot of verbiage change to make sure to include mixed use. And I was a little bit confused about that, but then Alex said commercial mixed use. So I just saw a lot of the cleanup or the updates would continually sort of add that term in. And there was some significant changes to. Definitions for commercial uses and things like that. And so I I was kind of. I guess I didn't really want to bother, but I'm still a little, just kind of wondering about sort of where that all comes from, because it doesn't seem to be related to housing. And some of these other things that seem to be in the priority of the discussion.
Yeah, maybe we can talk some specifics, I guess, but. In the definitions, there's sort of additions for, you know, so new definitions needed to talk about like permanent supportive housing, defining that. Defining emergency housing, defining what a unit lot subdivision is. And then we've moved a lot of definitions around in alphabetical order based upon a recommendation by the city attorney. Because the way that the existing definitions list things, it's sort of backwards, like it'll say subdivision, comma, unit lot. Instead of unit lot subdivision. So we sort of put it forward and then moved it in alphabetical order. Alec, I don't know if the the thing about commercial uses.
Oh, I just noticed that the term mixed use was updated and most of where it says JP. In the title 18, we added in mixed use to make sure that that particular phrase was included every time the phrase JP was used. And I didn't understand where that came into play. Was it the conceptual high density area up there that sort of? Inspired that or?
Well, I think what you might be seeing is we're changing the name of the comprehensive plan designation in the code because it was previously just called. Commercial or mixed use, but those were combined into one comprehensive plan designation called commercial slash mixed use. Alec, I don't know if you can chime in here a little bit in terms of some of the changes that happen in the JP. Code, if I'm doing a good job explaining these or not.
Yeah, I think you're on. On par, Ethan. So essentially on the existing, because we were, when we were doing this update, we were referencing the existing comp plan map. Then the the matrix in the land use element and then the zone. The matrix and the code. So in the existing map, if you look at the junction plan. It splits it between a comp plan designation of commercial mixed use and employment. But in the existing code with that matrix that I was showing you in the presentation, it showed the junction plan. As its own comp plan designation, but that's not true. So we were just cleaning it up to make it consistent where the junction plan was split between. Commercial mixed use designation and employment, just to clear that up and make it consistent.
Yeah, that makes more sense. I think that was one of the parts I was confused about supporting. I didn't understand where it all came from, but between Alex, Ethan's and Paul's comments, I think I understand better. Thank you. Well, this is kind of like when you go to the doctor and they ask you to remember three words and then they wait a few minutes. So can anybody remember the the motion now? After that, that we'd like to.
I can give it a try.
Great.
We can adjust. I make a motion that we approve the draft land use and housing elements, including updates to title three and 18.
Recommendation to the city council. Yeah?
And and make recommendation to the city council. It work?
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All right. We'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. All right, that completes that portion of the meeting. We also have some new business planning commission review comments. I. We're going to turn this over to Ethan or?
So. So, those were sort of referenced in the last agenda items. So I don't know that we honestly have, we provided the review comments in the packet, in case you're curious how we answered Dennis Nutbrock's questions and comments, but I don't know that we, we made all of the changes he suggested in almost every case, so I don't.
Yeah.
I don't know that we have a lot to say about it or need a discussion on it.
Okay, excellent. All right, great. Well, that brings us to 1.9, planning commissioner comment time. Commissioner Lewis?
Jones.
Jones.
That's okay. Yes, I am here. What, good job. I appreciate all this work. On the summer tabling, is that things that staff is going to be doing at these events? Are you looking for other people to come along and help on those things or what's the?
It's mainly staff from WSP and a little bit of city staff at some, some of the events. So we're going to have, I think you came by at the Christmas tree lighting. It's the same thing. We're going to have a booth, couple of boards, some handouts, maybe some treats or something like that to motivate you to come by. Just to have some one-on-one conversations with people about the comprehensive plan update, but at those same events, we're going to be also be tabling for the subarea project. So we'll have information about that project there as well.
I have another general question. I'm sorry. I don't know where else to ask it. Or maybe it's where do I find out? I mean, I know at the junction and what was turning over to the trust and the, or the tribal trust and properties. And it sounds like it's more about, it's not that all of that land was given, but it's potential if there was application for it. So I guess my question is, to what degree does what has been transferred and what it's looking at change what is, was prepared prior as the junction plan and all the work that was gone into that, are the plans still pretty much the same for that junction overall concept? Looking at it, like the Hampton Inn, is that still going in? All that kind of stuff that I was, or where would I go to find out more?
I could try to answer, or you guys could try to answer.
So the Hampton Inn and that development, the Shell Station, there was a little commercial strip and then a fast food restaurant. That's still the same, as far as I know, that, that is moving forward. That's not part of land that was taken into trust. Then there was the Fudge and 3B parcels, the, the Fudge parcel being that large dairy parcel, and then the 3B parcel, which I think is just to the northwest of Fudge. I don't know, I'd have to check that, but it's right next to the Fudge property, was also taken into trust and is part of the city's junction subarea plan and the code that goes along with that. So if the tribe develops that, since those properties are in trust and, you know, presumably they will, that they're not subject to the city's standards, so they can develop that with whatever they want, basically. But as for the rest of the junction that hasn't been taken into trust yet, the assumption is, you know, until that's taken into trust, maybe it will be taken into trust someday, and maybe it will never be taken into trust, that, that will develop in accordance with that junction subarea plan and code. For instance, immediately across La Center Road on the Van Vessen property, which is the property where you have the rock grinding and whatnot going on right there at the junction. Yeah.
Right at the corner of the aggregate.
Right, right at the corner with Paradise Park Road. The cities had a pre-application meeting on that property, I don't know, six months or more ago, for a hotel, a Starbucks, and I guess that was it. And so we've heard through the grapevine that that's still moving forward and that they intend to submit an application for that hotel and that Starbucks at some point, and they would have to meet the city's junction plan zoning standards or obtain a variance from some of them or something if they're not meeting them, but it would be regulated by the junction plan.
And a lot of that junction plan still has a lot of that commercial use and mixed use and things like that as far as zones.
Yep.
That's also part of that.
It does.
So we have the T-Rex, which was kind of this, where the, the, this is the Fudge property, right? The, it's the Fudge, the dairy. Yeah, right. So that, so I think, you know, what happened with that new area where they have the tribal thing on this side of the freeway now. I think, you know, initially, they, the agreement with the tribe had promised that they would only take into trust on the, that side of the freeway. And so we agreed to change that, but during that time where we thought it wouldn't come over here, we made this junction plan. So every time they buy a piece of land on this side now within that area, they can take that land into trust, but not until they own it, right? And so they own those near the Shell Station. So now they can take those.
Is not in trust.
No, it's owned by the, by management, I think, right? So then, anything down the line, if it's owned by somebody other than the tribe, they have to follow the plan. And then if it's the tribe and they put it into trust, then that part doesn't follow the plan, right? So.
I think on that junction plan, Paul, one of the things that been discussed the last year here is that planning commission really has talked about taking another look at that. Trying to take some of the restrictions out of it. It was a beautiful plan, beautiful. However, as it turns out, it's probably not going to be easy to implement. So I think there's probably some things in that plan that we can look at and perhaps change that might make it more applicable to some of the developers, the builders, developers and investors to do something there. Right now, we think this, again, a lot of people think this, it's a little restrictive. I think we probably need to look at that again.
And I think when we made that, well, and recently, we had a sort of a committee to look into that, and I think it got shelved, tabled a little bit. And tonight, I even saw something with Alec, maybe being able to assist with, with more of that. Was that alluding to, on the slide, some of the, maybe developments up at the junction on Alex's portion, was that alluding to maybe some planning on WSP's part for updating what we're doing with the junction or? Or not so much?
I mean, we've known that the junction plan needs to be updated for a while, but we haven't been engaged to look at that, and the city has plenty of other irons in the fire.
That was more just in regards to the, to incorporating the housing up there. And I think when you asked about the mixed use up there, I saw that TRX zone as sort of the mixed use where the dairy farm is, where you would have maybe the condo or apartments with the bottom floor retail, but I think so. I'm not sure if there's really any mixed use left up at the junction anymore. I think it's all just kind of commercial use now. That's how I see it.
I've got a couple of things, just, one of them is, Ethan, do you have any sense of how the county comes up with these numbers as far as income categories? What do they use as a basis for that?
So it all starts at a very high level at the state, and the state gives the county a low, medium, or high population projection to select from. And last year, about May or so, so one year, maybe more ago, the county selected a medium-high population projection, so somewhere between medium and high, which ended up being 700 and maybe 20,000 or something residents for the whole county, that the, the population in 20 years would be 720,000 or so. I'm just going by memory there, but it's, it's real close to that number. Then the county takes that population projection and is responsible for breaking that out between the different cities in the county and the rural areas of the county. Where is all this population going to go? Who's going to get how much? That's what they've been doing for basically the past year. In addition, there's a requirement from the state in the Growth Management Act that each city that has a comprehensive plan, each jurisdiction that has a comprehensive plan has to plan for housing, meeting those income needs that, that we talked about tonight. So all the way from extremely low income on up to moderate income. So each jurisdiction, then the county takes those population numbers that I was talking about, and they have a spreadsheet that they were given by the state. They plug in the population and it spits out the number of housing units needed by income category. And every jurisdiction across the state that has a comprehensive plan is you, is using that process. So that's at sort of a very high level, how it works, but the, I think the takeaway is that it's state requirement and they're not sort of like making it up.
But so it's actually driving the categories and the values of these categories.
Very much.
That was something that the county, you know, had to vote in. Doesn't sound like, it sounds like the state pretty well dictates what those different categories of income are.
Yes, the, the state sets the income categories and then the counties are responsible for sort of the final numbers within those.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And, and also just another thing, regarding the chart I asked for is, is if, if that's something we could have, I'd like to see that, but we could have something like next meeting, if possible, on that. Does that?
Just, yeah, just, just to be clear, though, you want a map showing the medium?
Yeah.
Okay, and only that? The, the current?
The current city boundaries with housing and color coded that says this is where those currently reside within the city limits.
Yeah, so maybe one map, isolated low density, one map, isolated medium density?
Whatever's easiest. I don't.
Easy to see?
I don't know. I don't know the best way to present.
Yeah, I think you can, I could think you'd do one map and just show the densities on there. I think you could just do three or four different colors and it's easy to know. Yep, really simplistic. Yep.
I've had people ask me, and I am not able to give an answer. Where's the low-density homes in our city? Where's the high-density? Where's the medium-density? I'd like to be able to give an answer, or, or show them something, or talk to them a little more knowledgeable about that. Versus, well, it's, we have them all over the city. It's not a very good answer from the planning commissioner.
And maybe one other question, and again, this is one of these random things, but I'm just curious. Is there any motion or activity or thoughts concerning a grocery store in the community? Or what is the kind of looking ahead, or where does that fall?
We, I mean, we know that that's a frequent comment. That's been made, and so the city's role in that, at least in this point in time, is zoning to allow that, that to happen. And the zoning probably could undergo some adjustments to allow that to happen. But it's not, it's not, the ability to do that is not far off. The market side of it is, we can't control that. A grocery store may come here or they may not, unless the city were going to take a much more active role in trying to recruit specific, you know, employers, you know, including a grocery store to the city. But right now, the city doesn't really have an economic development branch.
So, so there's two things. One is, there is some zoning that needs to take place, but that's probably can be done. It's also been looking who would be reaching out to the economic development to invite or be able to see a, a business that would want to come to the area.
I think with the downtown, the new downtown, downtown 2.0 is what they're calling it. I think that's an option, even though it wouldn't be in that particular zone of where we're talking about that new downtown, but it would open up another opportunity within the city to be able to pull something in like that. But that's something that, if that's what people want, that we could actually go out and recruit that. But it's, again, like Ethan was saying, it's a little easier said than done, because you have to get the Safeway, the Albertsons, or Rosars, whomever you have, to be able to want to come into La Center, to be able to think that they can support that growth of their store. So you got to find the right location. So for me, I, I think that if it was somewhere right off that freeway, where people could just hop off the freeway, get to the store, and then head downtown, but that's all part of that, that plan. So if it's something that you want, we could actually, you know, add that and solicit that. So.
Excellent.
I'm sorry, I have one more question.
Oh, yes.
Just reading through the things, and it's more by way of my
Well, this is the party meeting for that.
That's what I thought, on the policies or goals of, one of the things, there's a statement about saying encouraging development that directly benefits the La Center School District. Sounds great, but what does that mean? I know there's a couple of sections right by the schools. I mean, that are, that is that R and P zone thing, so I'm assuming that's what that's connected to.
Sorry, you might, you might have to remind me what you're looking at that says that.
There is, there is a whole list of policies that, and it's 1.3.6, but now I'm, it'll probably take me too long to find it up, but, but there is something that talks about just to encourage development that, and a few other words, that directly benefit the La Center School District. If you don't recall, that's fine, but I'm just curious, what does that mean or what would that look like? It's wonderful to do so, but.
Alex said he's looking it up right now, but we're both trying to remember where that might be.
You know, and I've seen that, it's always struck me as having the aptitude to make decisions with that in mind, you know, if they, if it arose.
Yep. It was probably under.
Yeah, I found it, it's under goal 1.3 of the land use element, which goal 1.3 says, plan and designate land uses and apply zones where adequate infrastructure and public services and facilities can be provided to support long-term growth. And then you look at policy 1.3.6, encourage commercial and industrial development in areas that directly benefit the La Center School District.
That may be an existing policy that we, that's in the existing plan that we sort of reordered. You know, hearing that feels like it could maybe be clarified a little, because not completely sure what that means, just like you.
I think, I think one way it could be taken is that if you have a business coming in, so on and so forth, part of the, and let's say they're going in next to the school district, part of that benefit could be, okay, you know, we could require them to put a park in, maybe an artificial turf soccer field, or we could do part of that requirement if they're in next to the school district, where the school district could benefit by them putting that in, or putting in a new park, or putting in maybe basketball courts or something like that. We could require something like that, or a trail path. So the cross-country runners could, you know, run on this trail versus on the sidewalk. I could think that would be some, some type of items that we could require. Just off the top of my head.
Okay, curious.
All right, thank you, guys. My only comment tonight, other than to thank the city staff and Ethan, would be for Commissioner Nutbrock, who's no longer part of the planning commission. Me and Commissioner Nutbrock started this at the same time, I think it was seven or eight years ago, and he probably contributed more single-handedly than any other planning commissioner that I've ever known. Did a phenomenal job, really, when it comes down to it, and I think it's a And I think it's a, I don't know, you know, exactly why he decided, um, that he'd completed his term here. Sure is for good cause, but significant loss for the planning commission to not have that Dennis Nutbrock. But I'd just like to thank him on the record, uh, outstanding individual. So.
It'd be nice to be given some kind of certificate or something from the city or recognizing. It'd be nice.
Definitely did a lot of service. Yes, he did.
I think it'd be nice to do that.
Okay. Discuss our next regular agenda and work session. Well. What do we have planned for our next, uh, agenda?
I mean, it sounds like not until August or so would we have a draft, um, capital facilities and utilities element for you to look at. So that would be kind of the next, uh, conversation that we would have with you.
Okay, and we're, uh, moving right into the next regular meeting attendance. Are we planning for this attendance to be, uh, in August?
That's the plan right now. Yeah.
The next meeting would be until August?
WSP doesn't have anything to present on the comp plan.
Right, we're all looking at it until, I guess, are we, are we planning to? I know that we don't, we skip a meeting. A lot of times it's the July meeting each year, but we've already kind of done a little bit of that. So, um, it's unclear to me and I don't think it's up to me to decide. If it is, let me know. But are we, uh, are we planning to meet in July, uh, then the second Tuesday again?
We don't have any specific plans to. I mean, we could talk about it further with the city to see if they have anything else they'd like to.
I mean, technically, do we need to have, just to show up, have a, a short, brief meeting, even if WSP wasn't present or to have a public comment or something?
Nope, you, you should have, your planning commission meetings are to go over planning decisions. And so if you don't have anything to be done and we're waiting for something to come on board, like the capital plan, whatever, there would be no reason to meet. If you've already fulfilled what, what we presented.
The, the one caveat to all of that is, um, I'll have to double check the sub area schedule. And if we have a planning commission update on that, we're use some time in that period between now and, um, August. July, I guess, but, uh, off the top of my head, I'm not, not sure. But we'll, we'll let you know for some reason that.
Tracy, you could certainly send out a note to us that said, uh, at this point, you know, we're, we will not have a July meeting. But between now and the next couple, three weeks here, something may come across or a discussion that says, you know, would, we could, here's two or three things that we can work on, be worthwhile to, to meet if it's, if it's valuable. I think we probably will to do that.
Well, I could say that I would plan to attend a July or August. Though we have any feedback on attendance for the typical Tuesday here from the left side?
I, I think so. I know I'm on the week before and I wasn't sure how long it was extending into that.
In, in July?
In August.
In August, okay.
And so I, that thirteenth of August is a little iffy. I should be able to be back, but I'm. Yeah, I know we're at a conference the week before and then probably with kids a bit, but I don't know how long.
Could we get maybe an email out in the month, mid-July for attendance to whether we should do that second Tuesday or we need to do a third Tuesday or something like that, please? And then are you okay for July or August?
At this point, I'm okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, great.
Things change, but it's, you know, that we've had, it doesn't happen often, but we've actually had planning commission meetings, not on a Tuesday.
Imagine that.
So, so that is possible, you know, to switch that if we need to. That's not set in concrete. It's nice to know that that's our plan, but we've made adjustments before.
Well, you remember when we used to do all this wordsmithing and development, we'd have meetings between meetings, sometimes two, three meetings back with E squared there.
We'd probably meet five or six or seven times.
Yeah, it was a lot. Okay.
And not at hours.
All right, well, uh, I suppose that brings us to the adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second, all in favor, aye, opposed, no. All right, meeting adjourned.
Thanks.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.